All right, I will call to order a meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty P M. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. You will all join me in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's probably technically a different song. Let's put all our flags back in. I will just note that Selectwoman Boris is joining us on Zoom. All right. Approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes in your packet to approve. August third, which was a special meeting, August fifteenth, which was a regular meeting, the eighth and twelfth, excuse me, of September, which were special meetings. Did we have August third?
I don't see August third in my pocket.
I don't have it in my mind either. Okay, so we'll hold on August third. I know we did them, I just don't see it in here. I have one. All right, so I entertain a motion on the meeting minutes from August fifteenth.
Okay, make a motion of minutes of August fifteenth.
Moved by Selectman Bullock, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, September eighth was the special meeting we had in Ashford. Public hearing, so I will move to approve the minutes from September eighth.
I'll second that.
Jim, any discussion?
No.
Seeing lies any discussion?
No, I'm gonna abstain because I was not there for the full meeting.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions?
Abstain.
All right, and that leaves us with the September twelfth meeting. This was a special meeting we had last week with the Ashford Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to approve the September twelfth meeting minutes.
I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. All right, President to speak. If you would like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. I'm gonna start in the room and then I'll go online. You can raise your actual hand in video or your virtual hand using the reactions button. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. James Marshall, forty-six, Fisher Hill Road. One quick point. I hope for a little better coordination clarity on future meeting schedule. I know it's not necessarily this meeting, but there's been a number of conflicts lately with special meetings being heard. At the same time as regularly scheduled meetings of other commissions in town. For example, tonight, for a bed meeting, has a special meeting to discuss the aspect. I would have loved to have been there, but this meeting appeared as well. Same thing last week, we had a similar situation. Meeting at the P Z C that I also had to be at, but also before that meeting this evening. So I just wish we could coordinate so that no one overlapped. And I hope that, you know, as a town, I can schedule that a little bit more clearly. But I'd also like to submit for record, and I sent this over the weekend, I'm not sure if it was received, but a thing that I have related to the Economic Development Commission and their most recent hearing last week.
Any?
Reaction?
Yep. Okay.
Last week on Wednesday, nine fourteen, where they discuss an application that I had sitting waiting to start a public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission account. I directed this to Mr. Maloney, who is the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. I'm just gonna read that, but I'd like it submitted for record here in the P D C. Just because of the concerns about the inappropriateness of the discussion. Your hearing is not even open for public hearing yet, but so, so, dear Mr. Maloney, I write this as a formal complaint and comment in response to the discussion by the Economic Development Commission at your most recent meeting on nine fourteen twenty-two regarding P Z twenty-two thirteen, which is an application currently before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The application in question is a request for a text change amendment to section twelve fifteen of the Town Zoning Regulation regarding a strategic development zone seeking to refine its regulatory requirements. It additionally contains a separate request for clarification regarding the definition and regulatory requirements of a warehouse used throughout the entirety of the zoning regulations. As the applicant for P Z twenty-two thirteen, I am incredibly disappointed and quite frankly angry at the actions and discussions by the E D C on the topic at that meeting. It was blatantly apparent that not only did the members not have a clear understanding of many of the details of the application, but also that they hadn't even read it or had it available in front of them during the meeting. How does a town commission hold a serious and competent discussion about the merits of an application currently sitting in front of another town commission as official recorded town business without even bothering to read the application? Having not had the opportunity to even present my for the P Z Z myself yet at a public hearing, I am floored by the fact that the E D C would speak about my law, let alone to do so in such an inaccurate manner as to put its potential for my application to be unfairly heard by the P Z Z. Additionally, I also find it incredibly unfortunate that although Mr. Demato attended that meeting and throughout that discussion, he never once spoke up to clarify the actual merits or intent of my application to the members of the E D C. Additionally, serving as our zoning agent, as I know you're all aware, Mr. Demato is explicitly informed of the details of my application, having received it and discussed with P Z Z, with P Z Z Council and myself at length previously. As a paid contracted consultant to the E D C through his business, the Tai Chi Planning and Policy Group, advising the E D C is literally his paid role, and not speaking up is simply a failure, both in his advisory role to the E D C as well as in his roles as zoning agent. At a minimum, he could have advised the E D C to hold discussion until such time as the commission at least had the details of the application available to them for discussion, which they did not. Quite frankly, I believe to be inappropriate for Mr. Demato to have been a part of the discussion at all and believe that he should recuse himself, as through his role as our zoning agent, he will be asked to provide comment and input to the P Z Z during the public hearing for my application when that starts. His dual role and by extension, the Tai Chi Planning and Policy Group, is a conflict of interest for the town of Wellington and should be addressed separately by the E D C, the P Z Z, and the Board of Selectmen. Although unaware my application was on the agenda, as email notifications do not appear to have been put down to the town for this particular E D C meeting for some reason, I watched the video of the discussion posted to YouTube and based my comments in this email and now on that hearing. For what it's worth, I was never contacted by the E D C as the applicant for P Z twenty-two thirteen to be made aware that my application will be discussed by that board or alternately with an offer to discuss with the E D C directly. I'd argue it would have been a reasonable conclusion to think that that would have been and should have been one of the E D C's very first steps. I would request the opportunity to speak before the E D C at the next meeting. And this was copied to Mr. Demato, brought along from the members of the P Z Z or law for record for the P Z Z as well as the members here. And I hope for the opportunity to speak and clarify the merits of my proposal officially before the town, both with the E D C and with the P Z Z eventually. But it was a completely inappropriate discussion, and I'm floored with the fact that they hadn't even read. They didn't have a copy of it in front of me, which was acknowledged by Mr. Maloney after the fact via email, but that the members hadn't even read the topic they were looking to discuss. And that quite frankly.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, you will be on in a few minutes.
I will, thank you. You do have a copy of this for record, which you may already have, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Yes. Let's go ahead and identify yourself.
May I have the board's permission to sit standing behind my port-a-aid more?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just try to project your voice because the microphone is here in the aisle.
Oh.
Got point. You gotta yell at it.
For the record, my name is Linda Hothan, H O T H A N, from Pine Chris Road. Um. I'm here in follow-up to some testimony I gave before the Planning and Zoning Commission at a part of a public hearing they held on September sixth, where I raised the issue about town of Wellington documents, particularly planning and zoning documents being on a private company computer, Teish specifically. Since that point in time, there has been an addition made to the process to get to the materials required or desired for the planning and zoning meetings. It's on their agenda. And to get to the material, you get to a little box. I'm gonna read the box and I'll give you the box. Digital Application Materials is the title. The information posted within these folders are digital copies, all five letters in caps, of application materials which have been submitted to the commission, meaning the Planning and Zoning Commission. The original documents are on file in the Land Use Department and hosted by Wellington's Online Application Portal. These documents have been provided only in an effort to make these materials easily accessible. This obviously is written as a C Y A kind of thing. But what concerns me is the tone of this. It's a bit of a smart ass. And I don't know what an online application portal is. And if everything in the Planning and Zoning Department is on the online application portal, that's an inappropriate location for those materials to be, because they're historical documents, they're not all applications. I'm frank to tell you that I'm starting to get concerned about the use of my tax dollars going to somebody to pay somebody who was rude and disrespectful to residents of this town. All right, I'm gonna give this to you. Thank you, that would be very nice.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Anyone online who would like to speak? Joan? Can unmute yourself? State your name for the record.
Are you talking to me or who?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't understand if you said Joe or Joan. Okay, thank you. Okay, no complaints, just a couple things that I wanted to update on here.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
I'm Joanne Turaskowitz and I'm at fifteen Lisker Road. And I don't know if I want to identify myself sometimes. Okay, did you know the library is turning two hundred next year? We're having our two-hundredth anniversary. I find this really incredible. So we are planning a two-hundredth anniversary party, of course, and we're trying to figure out what to do. We'd like to have some sort of event. It dawned on me that in all the years I've lived here in this town, it's what, eighteen years or so now? We have never had like a real celebration in town. We have one day things or something, but nothing, you know, really to get juiced up about. So anyways, we're planning to do activities and incorporate all of the major groups in the town that we can identify. And I'm hoping that we also encourage some people who have some of the wonderful planners we have in town. We have people that can plan anything here. And we can get them on board. We've got the Historical Society has agreed to help. We have somebody who's going to be the liaison for the senior center, et cetera. So I think we'll have a pretty good thing. I'm not under the illusion that the Board of Selectmen have time to do this, but if anybody wants to jump on board, you'd be warmly accepted. Okay, so that's, that's the first thing. I just feel comfortable going further with this without at least letting you know that this is in the works. The other thing is, I know you've talked with the, with the Boy Scouts and so have I. Margaret Jendalski and I have been taking care of the geraniums at the Old Town Hall. I don't know if I want to hang my head on that one, they were so bad this year. But anyways, the, the issue came up. That stuff between, you know, that jungle between the Old Town Hall and the Boy Scouting and in back there, this is really bad. And so I ran into one of the Boy Scout leaders when we were getting ready for the flea market. And he said, oh, the Boy Scouts can do it. Oh, no, they, they can't do it by themselves. It's so full of poison ivy and blackberry vines. I don't know if anybody's looked at it. And bittersweet, which is terribly invasive, that everything has to be ripped out of there and have to start over. So I'm, we are respectfully requesting that it go onto the jobs list for the town at some time. It's, you, you have to do it when all the leaves are off the trees and everything's died down. You, you can't do it now, it's too big a mess. But if we can get it onto the jobs list, it would be very nice and greatly appreciated. It's, it's not, it looks bad for the town.
So I'm gonna ask you if you could just wrap up your comments as you're.
Okay, I'm gonna do one more. Christmas decorations, you stuck with me today. Christmas decorations. We have one tree that is lit up. And with all these people get behind these projects in town, let's find somebody.
You can mute yourself if you are not identified, please.
I know when we had, it felt like you're like Ellie was like it takes a while to kind of get into a groove. So it was like toward the end, everything was good and I kept telling Melissa.
Thank you. All right. Have a. Quick, I'm just gonna ask you to wrap up your comment.
Anyways, if we're, what we really should do, if we can put a few more trees with lights on it, et cetera, this year, it would look better. We need some wreaths on the doors of the Old Town Hall, we need a light on it, little things. I mean, this is not big and, and knocking your socks off or anything like that. But again, maybe somebody in the town, if we put it to the Wellington line, will stand up and say, I'll raise the money and I'll put it behind. Do you have objections if we try to do it?
We will look into that, thank you.
Okay, thanks, that's all I needed. You guys have a great evening, I got another meeting coming up, okay? Okay, thanks.
Mr. McCoo?
Hi, Mike McCoo, Over Springs Drive. I'm sorry that I have just a minute to drop into this meeting and go, but for the last few weeks, I've been hearing a lot of concerns brought up in multiple forums about auto and potential conflicts of interest. As a taxpayer and also as Chairman of the Board of Finance, of course I care if there are conflicts of interest. And certainly, I would encourage townspeople who believe they have actual facts to bring those facts forward through the right channels, because we would certainly want to correct any discrepancies or clarify any information. But I want to say, both in my experience on the Board of Finance and other committees in town and as a citizen, to this point, I know of no evidence of Mike Demato having done anything incorrectly. A lot of what I hear people complain about is the fact that he is perhaps principal of the company that we're contracting with, that he is employed by and thus employed by the town of Wellington, not as an employee, of course, but we have many arrangements like this. You know, I can think of like our auditors and attorneys we've worked with. We sometimes have the principals of those companies that are assigned to be the representative of that company for Wellington. And that usually isn't an offensive thing, as it seems to be right now. As a matter of fact, sometimes we think of that as a great plus that we have one of the key people from a particular firm working with us. So certainly, from what information I have, I see it as a plus. Again, in my responsibility as the taxpayers, as Chairman of the Board of Finance, of course, if people think there's something inappropriate, they should bring that information to the Selectmen or the Board of Finance so we can evaluate that information. But in the meantime, I feel like there's just a feeding frenzy and I really wanted to say that, as far as I know, Mike Demato has been an asset to Wellington and I think it would be nice to hear some more people supporting him as opposed to taking shots at him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else online?
It's Nick Tell, forty-nine Myrtle.
Yeah.
So start off here. We'll be talking, well, you guys will be talking about the FOIA requests, you know, first one, sixty days. Understood, I was outside the window of complaint on that, so I filed the second one, as I know you are aware of. It was told to me that it is strictly you and Chris that were working on it from people that work in Town Hall. So I know that you, you know, these are on your table and you blatantly disregard them for whatever reason. Which, I mean, I get, you're trying to keep the information hidden from the people. So contact list directory emails, looking at Tallon's website, I thought it was awesome. You're able to, it'd be nice if you can pay attention, so they're looking at you watching. So it'd be nice to have a directory set up where people, yeah, yeah, I know, that's you. That, that directory for Tallon, the directory for Tallon, you're able to contact, for some reason, on Wellington, you're not able to. So I think you should look into the Tallon's website, that'd be a pretty good idea. So eventually, people, they'll probably be coming for more money for this school. I think you guys should be talking to the Board of Finance, getting updated costs, also updated interest rates. It's funny, during the, the time when we voted for that seventy-five thousand dollar excavator, so we should probably put that on hold until we know what other expenses are on our table. And now here we are, thirty percent increase on a town truck that you said we shouldn't be even worrying about during the Town Hall. So that's interesting. Has the town given retention bonuses in the past? Personally, I think all the ARPA money should be reinvested to the town, not be going to government workers. Scheduling conflicts, back-to-back weeks, some reason we can't get this straightened out. There is openings for these special meetings to be had, so people in town are now having to choose between the Board of Selectmen or Board of Education. Doesn't seem right.
Ask you to wrap up your comments as you're at your two minutes, sir.
Oh, so we let other, like Joan, keep on talking.
Yeah.
I'll hold you to the end. I'll, I'll talk at the end, thank you for your disrespect.
Fantastic, thank you. Is there anyone else online present to speak? Going once, going twice. All right, we'll move forward to correspondence. You have a list of correspondence in your packet. Some of the items by which we will discuss this evening.
I'm just gonna make a brief comment on, just summarize meeting conflicts and all that. We do ask all the boards to submit a schedule.
We do not, that is, that is through the town clerk's office, that it's not this board.
That's right, the town clerk does that, and it compiles it, there is a meeting calendar on that. And, you know, maybe we all can be more mindful of using that calendar. I, I know at least some people came to me and said, hey, you know, why do we schedule the town meeting on this Tuesday? I wanted to go to the Planning and Zoning meeting. I know there are days in the month where we have no meeting scheduled. Perhaps we can just look at the calendar and maybe we can take advantage of some of those blank days in the month.
So I'm gonna make.
But I, but I know we can't do that for everyone.
Absolutely.
Because of your budget.
I'll make a comment about meetings. We schedule meetings for town meetings and this board. Those are the only meetings that this board schedules. Make that clear. All of our meetings are public meetings. They are meetings held in public, not public meetings. They're meetings held in public, not public meetings. The meetings are the work of the Board of Commission. We do everything we can to avoid conflict. That said, sometimes it does happen. All of those meetings, we now have the ability to record and make sure folks can watch them afterwards. There are public minutes of all of the meetings. The meetings happen and sometimes special meetings are necessary at the convenience of the Board of Commission holding that meeting. You, there may be available night on the calendar. If there's not a quorum of a Board or Commission, you cannot meet. I can suggest we meet at a different night. If we do not have a quorum, we cannot have a meeting. Thus, we choose the night that our board can meet to conduct the business that we have to. That is what every board does. Last week, like two weeks ago, you heard me suggest we cancel our meeting and put our meeting off so that we could potentially attend the public hearing for, for a, a, a large issue in town. While I think we were able to do that, not every Board and Commission is able to do that to attend another meeting. If that board needs to meet, they meet. I think we all do our best. I've heard folks say Fridays are available on the town calendar. While that may be true, that doesn't mean Board and Commission members are available to meet. I'm willing to meet almost any night, that's not the case. I would meet on a weekend. We have a Selectman who suggested an ordinance in this town that would forbid that. So I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that this board does not set meeting agendas for other boards and commissions. Every Board and Commission has heard the same concern and we do our best. But if they have work before them that needs to be attended and they don't think it's best suited to wait until their next regular meeting, then they hold a special meeting at the convenience of that board. I do my best to alleviate any conflict, it just isn't always possible. And so, you know, I'll leave it at that. We, we can control what this board does and we can communicate through the town clerk to every other board or commission, just asking them to be cognizant of it, but recognize that there may be conflicts. But that board meeting is available to the public. It doesn't mean that they won't know what's happening. We've made multiple opportunities. And this is not something that is exclusive to Wellington. The larger the town, the more boards and commissions, the more conflict I suppose there is. So that's all I will say on that. Liza, did you want to make any comment?
No, I think you summed that up quite well, thank you.
I'll move on to first Selectmen report. The Steve Grant, we actually, we need to add a town meeting item that would actually allow us to appropriate the funds in order to spend them. So as, as we were getting ready to, to work on the R F P and get this thing moving, Donna came to my office with that. And with that being said, I began doing some research to make sure we have the appropriate topic. There, I can find multiple steep rounds where there were town meetings where that item was on and somewhere there wasn't. So we're researching to make sure we do the appropriate step. And, and we'll put that, hopefully put that on a, a future, a very near future town meeting. We have several things ready to go to town meeting. And I was hoping to have a call ready tonight, but this is one of those that I want to put on there so that we can move forward with actual expenses for the project. So I'll keep you posted on that. School Building Committee met Wednesday, September seventh. The Phase One environmental work was completed and that, they're waiting for the formal report. The that vendor did recommend Phase Two on both the whole school site and the private site. And so we'll look for that in the future. The Owners Project Manager is working with Superintendent's Office and the Board of Ed as they compile their potential numbers and projects. So I, we hope that soon the Ed specs will be completed by the Board of Ed. That's what they're meeting about tonight, so that they can have a lengthy, I hope, robust conversation. And we can start to see some preliminary Ed specs out of them so that some numbers can actually be worked up. So we're, we're moving in a forward direction with this process. And the committee also has a subcommittee that's preparing for community meetings that we hope to be held in the very near future as well as kind of a, a, a video that will give them an idea of the process and where we stand. So the next meeting is this Wednesday, the twenty-first, at six thirty. And as far as I know, it's still fully remote on Zoom. All right, truck lease, nothing new. The truck we ordered last summer is still on order. I gave Troy the look just in case he heard some last-minute news on our truck. So we're still being told this summer. ARPA Commission met today, we discussed expenditures to date. We are still well under budget. We still haven't received all of the funding from Tranche Two. We did get a date of October third, so we're anticipating honor before that second tranche of funding would be available. But due to this, the funding application process is paused until further notice. So we'll keep you posted if that money doesn't come in. The next ARPA meeting will be Monday, October third at one thirty. COVID nineteen, yes, COVID is still a thing. There's been no change in our vaccination rate, we still sit at sixty-nine, just over sixty-nine percent, fully vaccinated. COVID cases are in a total of eight hundred and eighty, which is an increase of twenty-two since our last meeting, which was August fifteenth, so that's in a month. So it seems a little high for where we've been, but it's a month's worth of total. And sadly, our reports have an additional COVID-related death here in Wellington since that last meeting. So we don't get data on individuals, but our thoughts are certainly with the, the family. The loss of one, and I will mention the new, uh, the new booster shot. The bivalent booster shot is available at all Eastern Highlands Health District, um, vaccine clinics. And you can check their websites, um, for clinic times and locations. Um, and you can get that through, uh, our website. It's E H H D dot org for Eastern Highlands Health District dot org. Uh, staffing update, um, later on this agenda, you'll, uh, see an appointment for an assessor. Um, the town of Bolton and, and Wellington have been working together to fill the position of a shared assessor. So I'm happy to be making an appointment to you all. Um, Jennifer Miller is our current acting interim animal control officer. Um, will be, uh, conducting interviews to permanently fill the position, uh, very soon. And sadly, Michelle Seer, who is, um, in our, the assistant revenue collector and the DPW administrative assistant. Um, has, uh, decided to take a position in a, another town. Um, we are very sad to lose her. Um, I can speak for myself, probably Troy as well. She has been an asset, um, to the town and we won't miss her. Her last day is this Friday. So this is a union position, so it will be first, um, it, it's out with the union. Um, when that five, five business days is up, um, if not filled through the union, we will publicly, um, advertise at that point. So that's a twenty hour a week position. Uh, fifty, I'm sorry, fifteen hours a week at Public Works and eighteen hours a week here in the town office building. So we wish Michelle, uh, well, um, and we will miss her. So stop by the revenue collector's office and take care. Alright, any questions on our update? No. Public Works, Troy.
Alright, uh, we've cleaned up catch basins around town, roadside mowing still going on. Uh, we've chipped brush from a few fallen trees that have come down. Uh, hazardous trees are still being removed around town by, with our contractor. We patched holes around town. Uh, we've moved around Public Works and the transfer station. Uh, we assisted the part of installing our covers back on the fire truck. I said the transfer station, uh, the lines got restripped up there last week. We cleaned the shop. We moved the dock out of Paul's Pond for the winter season. And, uh, we've been currently working on Kitchell Road. We've installed three new cross culverts, three hundred feet of six inch under drain. And a hundred and sixty feet of eight inch under.
So Troy, I have no excuse for going well over the lines of the transfer station. That was what you're saying. Okay, lots of pay attention to my parking. Um, and I did have the opportunity to go out to Kitchell Road to see some of the work that they're doing out there. Um, and utilizing the new equipment, um, and the amount of work that our, um, new excavator, um, has been helpful in. Um, is, is fantastic. The, the ability for them to get that job done, um, in a much more efficient manner. Um, I can't put into words. So while some may think we should have held off on a piece of equipment. I, I will tell you, it is a, a beneficial piece of equipment, um, to the, to the Public Works crew. And the work that they're able to do for residents. So, um, kudos to your crew, Troy. Right, anything on Public Works folks?
The update on the Bush motto.
I talked to the contractor and he's hoping for the first or second week of October. So that's.
We're done with the drainage.
Yeah, the drainage is all done. We're just waiting for the other contractor.
And then, uh, um, guardrails will go up on that.
That's all I have, thank you.
Alright. Yes, okay. Um, next item, uh, recognition of Peter Anderson for the Conservation Commission. So I'm going to make a motion. Peter Anderson's public service of the town of Wellington. I move whereas Peter Anderson has served on the Conservation Commission for twenty-six years. And whereas Peter Anderson served as chairman of the Conservation Commission for nineteen of the past twenty-six years. And whereas Peter Anderson and his wife Judy have lived in Wellington since nineteen seventy-two and have raised two children in Wellington. And Peter and, and whereas Peter Anderson managed the Fenton Ruby Park and facilitated the acquisition of several key open space parcels, including the Townage Conservation Track, Nolton Preserve. And the new Townage Estates Parcel on Mason Road. And whereas Peter Anderson, who also volunteered in several capacities for Joshua's Trust. And developed and maintained the trails on there. I don't want to say this wrong, uh, Chenus Roaches Preserve located on Blair Road. And whereas Peter Anderson has also served on other community boards. And therefore be it resolved that the Wellington Board of Selectmen and the residents of Wellington in the town, residents in the town of Wellington. Proclaim September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to be Peter Anderson Day. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the town of Wellington this nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by, uh, Selectman Bullock. Uh, Mr. Anderson is with us on the line. I am sad to say, um, that, uh, Peter and Judy are leaving us for the beautiful state of Maine. Uh, to enjoy their retirement. I believe you're moving closer to, uh, one of your sons. Is that correct?
Our daughter.
Your daughter. So, uh, you know, we, our losses means, uh, gain. And knowing your, uh, love for all things, uh, conservation. Um, here in Wellington, I have no doubt you will find a home there, uh, to serve your community in Maine. And, and I can't say thank you enough for all the work you've done, um, on behalf of the Conservation Commission here in Wellington. So I'll give you an opportunity to, everyone here, give your round of applause. I had, I've had the pleasure of working with you here as well as Judy on the scholarship commission. So you're going to be missed. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you very much. Um, Wellington's been, uh, good to Judy and me for the last fifty years. We just tried a little bit to be good to Wellington in turn. And, uh, it's been a, it's been a good gig and, uh, but e- every half century, you should probably change the view a little bit. So we're on our way to do that. And again, thank you very much, folks. Thank you, Wellington.
And if you ever find yourself traveling through, please, uh, please stop. I'm sure there are plenty of people in town who would, uh, appreciate seeing you. But once again, thank you so much. So before you leave Maine, we will get this, uh, for me, we'll get this to you, um, in person. But, um, today, well, we'll take a vote. So is there any discussion by other selectmen? I'm sorry, I didn't give them an opportunity to speak. No, alright, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion. Alright.
Hi.
Alright, I gladly, um, sign this proclamation. And, uh, we wish you, uh, much success in your, uh, years in Maine. So thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, big shoes to fill, folks, big shoes. Alright, I'm going to move forward. The next item is tax refunds. Alright, we did the majority of them last week, so we have one, two. I will move, uh, to refund Alejandro Capo, uh, certificate of correction in the amount of fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Given by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund C C A P Auto Lease LTD, a certificate of correction in the amount of six hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents.
Second.
Seconded by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carrying. Uh, Revenue Collector had a little bit of time off last week, so she didn't have time to give us any more. We got a break today. Alright. Next item are appointments. So the first item, um, I will move to appoint Kara Fishman as Wellington Town Assessor. Effective October third, twenty twenty-two, expiring October second, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Alright, discussion. Um, so as you know, we've been without an assessor since February. Um, and, um, we, we put the search out with the town of Bolton to share this position. It would be a fifty-fifty split with the town of, uh, Bolton. And, um, I'm happy to say that, um, we believe Kara Fishman will be, um, best suited in this position. We look forward to beginning our work with her. Uh, she does work, um, in a neighboring town. Um, while that's unfortunate, uh, for them, we, we are looking forward to her, um, moving, uh, over to Wellington. So her last, I'm sorry, her first day would be with us would be on October third. So when, what I will talk about and something we'll have to look at in, in the future is, um, the term. So we work with the town clerk's office to, uh, make sure we have terms for all appointments. Um, accurately. And so what Robin brought to us was that the statute that referenced the assessor's term, um, now has no, it has had no term limit referenced. And so we have an ordinance that reference, references an old statute, which was for two years, which has actually been repealed. Because it's, it was considered an elected position at that point. Um, so she's been researching what we need to do to update the ordinance. Um, but without any additional clarification, we really could choose, um, an expiration date if we wanted. But her recommendation would, would be that we stick with that two-year term that we had been doing until such time as we, um, make any necessary or adjustments to the ordinance. And that would make that term, um, she's, I apologize. Um, two years, so twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. That makes sense to you all? So we didn't deviate from what the ordinance said, but the ordinance does need to be updated. So we're gonna need to work on that. But we stuck with the same, um, term timeframe. It just references, uh, repealed statute.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, the, the plan moving forward is for Kara to be in Wellington two days a week. Um, Mondays and Fridays, and then she would be two days in Bolton, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Um, but we both have the understanding, um, that if time permits, she, uh, could respond to work in, uh, either town. Uh, while she's, um, here in Wellington or there in, in, uh, Bolton, if that works. Right, so if she's able to, um, so she will be here long days on Fridays and Mondays. So it was important that we, um, had an assessor here when we are open late evenings to the public. And so that will be Monday nights. So we look forward to working, uh, with Kara. Any other comments, discussion?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I will call for a vote, uh, a proper roll call vote.
Liza?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye. Look forward to this and, and I would be remiss if I did not, um, once again properly thank Rachel Pierce. Who is our previous assistant assessor, um, and currently our assistant tax collector, who has been splitting her time. Um, every week since February, um, to work in both the town clerk's office and the assessor's office. Um, and has done a, a fantastic job keeping things moving in a forward direction in the assessor's office. So, um, thank you to Rachel for being, um, uh, the ultimate team player here.
Do we have an assistant assessor?
We do, Nicole Snyder.
Okay.
So Rachel, um, was able to assist in that. Nicole started with us. She's just been here and here. So, um, she, she hadn't, um, had any of the assessor coursework. She hadn't been through a full cycle, um, and, and as you know, we've had multiple conversations about some of the things that were really um, left undone in that office. So Rachel came in and, um, very, um, seamlessly, uh, moved things forward and just corrected, um, errors that we found, um, in both, you know, favor. So.
And we had a number of residents come forward, so that we've addressed those.
Oh, yeah. There are a handful of things, but they've been worked out with residents that will need the work of an assessor.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're very few, um, and, and they're well aware of what the process is. And she will be here in time for those to be, um, addressed before the grand list.
Um, it is. Showed up several times.
Mr. Kline has shown up several times. Um, there's, uh, we don't necessarily, we don't necessarily agree on what is, issue is. And we've worked with other assessors, so Kara is, uh, that'll be one of the first things she takes on. And that may not be something, um, he may still be unhappy with the result, but that doesn't mean, we certainly addressed it. I actually sat down with him, uh, and the assessors, uh, Rachel and Nicole, and we had some good conversation with them. So he, he knows that when the assessor comes in, he's gonna sit down with them to see if, um, how he wants things to be.
Well, I know.
So while he wants them to look at that.
Particularly eager to.
Yes.
That we have an assessor.
Yes, so.
We had it.
Yeah. Yeah, um, they communicate with him, uh, regularly and he knows that until that time, um, nothing will. Alright, so I'll move on, uh, with appointments. We have two, uh, appointments, reappointments with the Capital Improvement, um, Program Committee. I will move to re, uh, appoint Christina Mylos as a regular member of the Wellington Capital Improvement Program Committee. Effective November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, expiring November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. There a second? See Liza mouthing second.
Sorry.
Alright, any discussion? I thought Christina was on. I didn't know if she wanted to speak to her reappointment. She is currently the Chair of C I P. Brings, uh, tremendous knowledge to the world. One's going twice, like any discussion does something? Right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries. The second reappointment to C I P is, uh, I'll move to reappoint Stuart Cobb as a regular member of the Wellington Capital Improvement Program Committee. Effective November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, expiring November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion?
Uh, so what do we, we have like, like a third come off and then another third come off? Is it staggered?
There's, uh, so there's six and every two years, every, yeah, there's, there's two of them. So the other positions, um,
Yeah.
Are the first electman, the Chair of the Board of Finance. And then, um, our, a non-voting member is, um, our business manager. So the, uh, the remaining members rotate. The six rotate, yes. So unless they all were to resign at the same time, we should, you know, have to every, every time. So Stuart is a, uh.
Just refreshing myself.
Yes. On the joint of C I P, it's, it's important work to be done there. So, right. Seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying. I want to thank Christina and Stuart for their, um, continued service in this capacity. Alright, the next item, uh, Mr. Bullock, you asked to be on the agenda. We had a FOIA request.
Right, I asked to be on the agenda just so I could follow up and it's determined status, has it been addressed?
So we are, we, it is in the works. Um, I tell you that I anticipate we will have all the documents, um, before the end of the week.
Okay. That's my biggest question.
Alright. The next item is, uh, warrant in contract for propane tank replacement. Before, uh, we discuss and make any potential motions, you may recall that, um, it's probably been a couple of months now since Troy came to us and our, um, current propane vendor. Um, who was a previous vendor, um, noted that our tanks, um, they will no longer service and they will no longer fill, is the more important item there. And so I brought it to you, uh, mentioned it to the Board of Finance as well, that potentially these costs, uh, could be upwards of twenty thousand dollars. Um, depending on some early quotes we had. And then I was going to be working with our business manager to determine whether, where we thought the funds, um, could come from. So the first thing, uh, I always look at is how can we avoid going back to the Board of Finance for more funds? Do we think we can do it in our budget? Which is why, to some, uh, point, um, it's not something that we talked about at, at the town meeting. It was irrelevant to the topic, but also because I was working with our business manager to determine if we could, um, find the dollars within this uh, fiscal year budget. And Donna believes we do in fact have the dollars in our budget, um, to do that. And we use, we use the highest anticipated cost to determine availability of funds. So, um, uh, what I'm proposing is that we take a look at the, um, quotes that we have received. And that, um, we, um, move to take action now. And this would be coming from our current budget, but because it's over five thousand dollar, potentially over five thousand dollars, we would need, um, to officially, uh, approve a vendor and, um, here at the Board of Selectmen. So we went out with, uh, three vendors, Holcon Gas, AmeriGas. They're both state approved vendors, um, and High Grade Gas Service. Um and High Grade Gas serves as High Grade is our current propane vendor. Uh but this is outside of that scope of work, so we did um follow our procurement policy, which was um three bids. I can tell you that um Holcon, although said they were going to bid, um did not. So you have in front of you two bids, one from uh the first one near piles from AmeriGas. And um theirs is to replace the thousand uh thousand gallon tank at the transfers, I'm sorry, at the DPW garage. Is five thousand four hundred fifty dollars. And that is just removing the tank and replacing it with a new tank and hooking it up. That does not involve taking the propane that's already in the tank out. And um. For a five hundred gallon tank at the Dog Pound, their um. Bid is for three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Like, so that's three thousand for the tank, seven fifty for parts, uh fittings and labor. High Grade Gas has quoted us um for a five hundred gallon tank. At each of the facilities, five thousand four hundred ninety dollars or a thousand dollar tank. Um at eight thousand nine hundred ninety. So they they went ahead and looked at our account history and thought five hundred would be enough for the Public Works Garage. But our generator is on that uses propane on that tank, and so you recall in ARPA is a a new generator. Um the one we have is very old um and and in need of replacement, so we're looking to do that. And so in order to do that, we'd want to make sure we had enough propane to run the generator because that that um. Services our fuel pump, and that's how all of our uh emergency services, equipment and town trucks um get their fuel. So Troy's recommendation is that we keep the thousand gallon at the DPW garage and a five hundred gallon at the Dog Pound. So. With that, it's clear that one is less than the other. I will say we took into account that AmeriGas. Again, they're gonna take the old tank, take it away, and bring a new tank in, so it'll do propane. High Grade will remove the remaining gas in the existing tanks and then transfer it into a new tank they put in. So um the quotes are quite apples to apples if we uh account for the fact that. Troy's tank at DPW garage now currently has about twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars worth of propane in it. Um that we would lose. If I factor that into a new propane purchase. There's AmeriGas is still under.
It's still under.
It's still under.
Yeah, even if you add propane.
Yeah, but I thought it was important today as we discussed that, that we look at, we have to replace, if if he had told me, you know, it was five percent full. It's kind of a watch, uh you you know, not talking a lot, but we're talking about six hundred gallons. In in the current tank, so um with um we pay just under two dollars a gallon, so it's roughly twelve hundred dollars worth of propane. Troy, do you have a recommendation for us?
I mean, obviously, I uh I agree that is our contractor we have now, but AmeriGas, they're both basically gonna replace the tanks. It's gonna be the same tank, it's just a propane that's inside. Um High Grade Gas will pump out and put the propane back into the tank. So that's the only difference between the two quotes, that's all.
Yeah, there there is, you know, significant savings.
It looks like it's still cheaper with AmeriGas, even if you just didn't pump the propane up, you just took the bank away.
They just take it all.
And uh currently at the Dog Pound, it's there's barely, there's minimum in there, there's hardly anything. One of the.
So it's not even.
It's not, it's more just Public Works Garage.
So I'm I'm going to move to award AmeriGas. Um. The contract for propane tank replacement at the uh Town of Wellington DPW Garage. In the amount of five thousand four hundred fifty dollars. And at the Wellington, Town of Wellington Dog Pound uh for three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
A second.
Hmm, all right. Before we heard first something, all right, discussion?
I have a question about it.
Hi.
Um so you said that you believe you found the funding within the existing um budget.
Yes.
Can you give an idea of where that came from?
Um I believe this is coming from um, I think it's the health insurance line item Donna told me.
Okay, so it's gonna be unspent funds from another line item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We directed, thank you.
So I was happy to see, one, that the numbers came in much less than we had originally. Um just kind of been been told, right? We were looking at worst-case scenario, and Donna and I looked at that worst-case scenario. Um amount, and we're well under that, so I I'm pleased to see that. And and then the numbers from AmeriGas came in even lower. Um than what I thought was going to be low, so um. Yeah. So I'm pleasantly surprised and and happy that we can find it within this budget and don't need to go back to taxpayers. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I forgot to unmute.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, the next item, let's see, uh Robin here is uh the Town Clerk Preservation Grant.
I've been taken away. Request to um be appointed to or authorized to sign the grant application for. The Historic Documents Preservation Grant that we get in the way, uh fifty-five hundred dollar grant. Um this year I am looking to purchase two of the tall roller shelves to put um the land records in. And in the minutes, if you run the ball, you'll see that we are out of room. In addition to that, I um would like to purchase a map aid, one of the, like when you walk right into the vault, they're on the right-hand side. Um. With the additional shelf, I need to shift a couple of things around and I think. Uh drawers that are in them.
Can you remind us what you used with your grant from last year?
Last year? Oh, yes, we did the maps. We up uploaded all of the maps digitally, so if you're researching land records, you can also see maps. Um we were always on, we'd get home calls or email back into email map, so now we don't have to do that, right?
Okay.
And it's been quite successful.
All right, I I will move to authorize a town clerk, Robin Campbell, to be the designate, designatee for the State Historic Preservation Program Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. For a second?
A second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
No.
No, Robin, uh great job. Look forward to uh seeing your new purchases.
And.
Well, first we need to get the grant.
Well, yeah, and I look forward to Public Works possibly helping us shift.
I mean, Troy, she did say it nicely. All right, so uh with no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Robin. All right, next item, Town, uh no, uh Connecticut DOT Master Municipal Agreement Right-of-Way Resolution. All right, so we received two copies of uh. A master municipal agreement for rights-of-way projects in the state. Just two agreements, no idea what they were for, um needed to be signed by a certain date. Turns out back in twenty fifteen, um the state DOT had reached out uh to the selectmen's office or then for selectmen. Uh for selectwoman and um asking the town to sign basically this boilerplate language that would govern all municipal right-of-way projects involving the department. Uh which are which is undertaken throughout a ten-year term. Uh the key here is um this is tied to funding that we get. So we reached out to the state and said, can you tell us what this is? I don't have that email here, Kelsey. Oh, yes, I do, sorry. Um and so when we we asked and they referenced the letter back, um now that they're getting to checking things, they discovered some. Um municipalities had not signed the agreement um. And um as funding opportunities have come, that's what they've discovered, who has not signed it. We um currently um have been awarded funding um for the willing uh pedestrian and streetscape improvements along the road, so that's our lotsit. Grants, um and their right-of-way acquisitions, and sometimes they're re in order to receive the reimbursement. Um once the project is complete, the MMA has to be executed. So basically, if you want your reimbursement for the right-of-way.
So that's the requirement for the lotsit, right? You have to sign this MMA for ten.
That's correct.
It's unusually long time period.
Um and so we have to do two copies of it by September twenty-first, I believe. So this is just in under the wire, so. Um that's the background information on this. Um I will move uh. The following resolution resolved that the Honorable Erica G. Waschinsky, her selectwoman, is hereby authorized to sign the agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Rights-of-Way Projects.
Second.
Second by Liza, discussion? Just like the state too, seven years later discovered.
I would, I wish I knew a little more detail what was in that. If there's synopsis or something. Did they give us a synopsis?
Yeah, do you have it in here?
Right there.
Yeah. The ten-year term covers either the department or the municipality taking on the responsibility for the administration of the rights-of-way bates of a particular project and includes standard terms, conditions. Contractor boilerplate language that governs all municipal rights-of-way projects involving the department, which are undertaken throughout the ten-year term. Although we may not have a right-of-way project in your municipality, the execution of this uh agreement will streamline future project business with the department. And in our case in twenty fifteen, we did not have a project before then, um but seven years later, we do.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
He says they want to park our trucks on on a nearby side of some other road, right? Something like that, so we don't have to move material all over the place.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I will abstain. Motion carries. But I don't want to get them mixed up, so we don't get them back to them, who will have them behind, the town clerk has to witness. The can, all right, thank you both very much. All right, uh ARPA Region Nineteen funding. So um. Sometime back in uh July, the uh town manager in Mansfield approached at my office as well as the town of Ashford. Um and we were developing a plan um for funds for both town staff, Region Nineteen staff. And uh Mansfield Public School staff, and this was um in order to recognize individuals for the work they had done during COVID nineteen. Similar to the proposal I put before this board and then ARPA for our employees. Uh for the work they did during COVID, um the difference is Mansfield did not use ARPA funds, they use return funds. Their proposals return funds from the end of this last fiscal year, and their proposal was four hundred dollars per town employee. School staff member and um Region Nineteen staff members. It did not include administrative administrative staff. Um so I think they were ready to move forward, but they wanted to see if Wellington or Ashford was willing to go. In on the fact that this was uh you know, certainly something I I would entertain, but needed to come before this board. Um our portion of the amount they determined would be eighteen percent or ten thousand two hundred twenty-four dollars. Um while I uh would be in favor of such a request, um if we moved it towards ARPA. I couldn't, I couldn't guarantee an approval of this board or ARPA commission, or right now we can't even apply for ARPA funds. The the submissions are are currently closed, but I would really have a difficult time only uh moving forward. Uh a package to Region Nineteen without first considering um Wellington Public School staff. And so that's why I'm bringing this to you. Uh my understanding is, and I don't know which way Ashford has gone with this, they too were looking at ARPA funds. Um for for their consideration, and and they don't know where they've landed um as of yet, but. Uh you know, I think we need to talk about what we would do here. Right? And and how do we, how how do we provide um this to Region Nineteen? Do do we want to ask for it out of our returning funds? That would mean going to um. A town meeting, right? Unlike Mansfield, our process is different. Their town council makes those decisions. Um our former government has the, oh, it's ringing, um the town meeting is as legislative body. I don't know what that amount would look like if we stuck with the same dollar amount um that they used at Region Nineteen. Or in Mansfield's calculations, originally Mansfield wanted to just, the proposal was that Mansfield paid all of it, and their town council said, whoa, whoa, whoa. How about sending towns contribute, it's unfortunate. Um so Matt, neither Wellington nor Ashford have moved forward. I believe Mansfield was moving forward with their own. And putting Region Nineteen on hold until such time as both towns could have a conversation. So I want to open the floor to the two of you. Um see what you think.
So we have uh two options, uh what they're saying, are they're asking us to consider using ARPA funds or returning bonds?
They're asking us to consider contributing.
Contributing.
So our choices where the funds come from are are up to to us, but ultimately, none of those decisions end here. They could just start here.
Yeah.
We don't have, unlike the town council, we can make that final call in Mansfield. We don't have um that ability, so we could make. Uh a proposal, we could make a request, and then it would have to go either to a town meeting. If it were out of a returned funds, because they go back to the general fund, or to um the ARPA commission. When and and if applications open up again and um see how it goes there. So their request is just, do we want to contribute?
Yeah, I think theoretically, it's a wonderful idea and some and and, you know, something that we've done here is, you know, for our municipal employees. Um I don't really think that we can consider it for ARPA given, at the moment, given the fact that we paused. All, you know, requests, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a request as the Board of Selectmen when the um. You know, when it requests for ARPA funding are closed for everybody else. So um I feel like we can't really discuss it on that level at this point. Um or, you know, propose to do that at that level at this point.
I'm I'm kinda. Kinda along those lines as well. I mean, we we heard a lot of feedback lately from residents saying, hey, do whatever you can to save. Money and uh and and even ARPA funds, I mean, there's a lot of. I'm kind of surprised a school hasn't put forth any ARPA requests of their own. I mean, even if you were. Wanted to build a new school, I mean, you you gotta, you need swing space, you need, there's a lot of things that need to happen that haven't been completely thought out yet. So I'm kind of reluctant to just say, oh, yeah, we'll just, we'll just go do that, because I I I don't think we've figured out all our needs yet. I think we're still working through that.
You mean at.
Our local, our own local.
Every day there's a new need. You've heard me ask to turn off the air conditioner so it didn't spark at us. Every day there's a a new need in this building. Um but with that, it's, do we want to consider participating with them and then start a process? And and I was very clear uh in my discussions that. Where wherever something lands here, it just is, are we gonna move a a discussion forward? And do we want to, you know, continue to have that? I can work with the superintendent's office and we can work up a package. Um you know, following similar guidelines to to see what that looks like in numbers from. Wellington Board of Ed and and see if that's something we think we can afford, decide if we want to move it forward. From previous funds or wait and see if ARPA opens up and try to put it through um ARPA funds. There's no doubt that um. Teachers at both um Hall Center and E O Smith High School worked under um extremely. Difficult circumstances during COVID. They revamped the way they have taught their entire careers. Um and and you know, our students struggled, our teachers, um and our support staff struggled as well, and and I. And, and I don't want to negate that. Um, but you know, and I, I guess I'd rather have some robust conversation and, you know, potential. Let's, let's look at what it would cost on either end, start some discussions and, and maybe Mansfield was willing to put it off a little bit longer if we're still having discussions and, and debating it. And again, their amount was $4,000. I'm sorry, $400. So, and, and I know it's a difficult choice for, we, we want to acknowledge the work you did. And, um, we don't want to be so insulting as by the time everything comes out of it, you know, here's $5. So, um, 400 is the amount they came up with, but remember when their, their original proposal was looking at large amounts of folks between Region 19 Mansfield Public Schools and their town hall, um, their staff is greater than ours.
I think, um, we would need to see like the full financial impact to have further conversation on the matter. So, um, you know, I agree. I think, uh, pushing forward something for just Region 19 would, um, would not be wonderful, a wonderful message for our center and hall staff. So, um, so I mean, I think it's, it's worth a further conversation. So if there's more information that can be brought to the next, um, selectman's meeting for us to discuss some concrete numbers, um, you know, with concrete numbers, it may become quite clear one way or the other.
Yeah. All right. So I'll use the, I'll use the criteria that they did as far as school goes. Um, I'll gather some numbers working with the superintendent's office and bring back, um, something further for discussion, um, at our next meeting. So we'll leave it on. All right. Thank you. And I'll let them know that we're, we're at least willing to discuss. All right. The next item, um, in old business, uh, public land access, uh, roaring brook concern. So you both recall that we received a, a concern from a, a resident regarding access to, uh, roaring brook on, on the eastern side on Village Hill Road. So we've done some work, uh, we worked with, um, Mike, uh, Demato and Chris. Um, essentially right now this is a landowner dispute. Um, so it's, none of it is town property. So we don't typically get in the middle of a landowner dispute. There's always been public access to go fishing in that area and that may still be. Um, what we looked at today is there's a conservation easement there. And so, um, we spoke with, um, Kathy Demers today from Conservation Commission. She had done some looking into this. She had received a similar complaint from, from another resident about accessing that as well. So, um, where we're at with it is, um, it's, it's not town of Wellington property, right? So there is some orange fencing that is up that prohibits anyone from going on there. We cannot, although it's believed to be public land, um, we cannot go in and remove the fencing. And the, uh, person that the resident that complained to us is, is not going to do that either. He's, he's well aware that he doesn't have that authority. We don't either because the conservation easement is definitely not to the town of Wellington. So, um, we believe at one point it is not to the town, um, that it was, we believe through deep. Um, so what I'm going to do is see if we can't work with the state agency to determine if that easement is still in place, the property is, and potentially link the, um, residence with the state agency to see what can be done, um, and facilitate in that manner. My hope was that, um, it was to the town of Wellington and then we would have more say in something that was erected on our property, uh, uh, right away. But that is not the case. So, um, while I was hoping we could, I could offer you an update with an easy solution, um, here. It's a little bit more, um, complex than that. But so really there's, there's nothing for the town um, to do, but I am willing in my office to work with the, the state agency, agency to help see if we can get some clear clarification of, um, what's able to be done on, on that piece of property and, and where the easement current, currently stands.
And it, just to note one other thing, um, if you look at any Google map or, or whatever, that is listed as, um, Roaring Brook Park. Um, and it's green as a public property. Um, you know, as, you know, so, uh, I mean, we've got, we've got some maps, so we just have to figure out who actually has responsibility for that area. Um, but it is listed on maps as, um, as.
Unfortunately, it's not us. So.
Yeah. No, I understand. I was just adding that in for context.
That's what we were hoping that, that it was us and then we could, you know, be real, um, productive in that. But we can assist in, in working with the state agency. So we can get a clear answer out to, um, the residents. And, and now I know that, you know, working with Kathy, there are multiple residents who have fished in this area again for years and in the same manner. And we're all surprised to find, um, the fencing up. And, and so we're going to do what we can to facilitate, um, the process from there. So that's where we stand with that.
Does anybody maintain that park?
Well, we maintain.
We mow it.
We, yeah.
Mow it. Yeah. But I mean, it's the little thing down there where they get the little parking loop thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's not the property where they cross. We don't mow into that property. We just do the front.
Parking.
Yeah.
Area.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Okay. All right. That is all of our, this is on our agenda. I will move to present to speak. Is there anyone? I'm going to go online. Anyone online present to speak? Again, you can identify yourself for the record and you have two minutes.
Nice. Nick Tello. Yep. Nick Tello, 49 Myrtle. So just wanted to start off, uh, glad to see that we're under 18,000, uh, for that. You know, that was a high number. Let's see. Um, I see a lot of posts of speeding on Village Hill. I don't live on, uh, Village Hill or really associate with Village Hill, but I want to speak up, uh, on behalf of the residents that live over there because they, they deal with people flying. I don't know if the towns looked into maybe putting speed bumps in or, or doing some kind of, um, speed control in that area for those, those people that live over there. Um, let's see. Curious email process when emails submitted. I've heard concerns through people in town that, uh, how they get routed is, uh, concerning. I don't know. Uh, future meetings. I don't know if there's anything that you can speak, um, to explain how that goes through. See. So I personally don't care if you, uh, your community care gets money. I just have concerns that EDC had denied, uh, a business, the ability because they weren't located in Mansfield. But yeah, you, your community care got it backdoor through the Humane Society. Again, I don't care if they get it, but the standard needs to be the same. Uh, and the board should probably look into that. It's just not right since they're located in Manchester. And then, uh, I think the board needs to reevaluate Mike's role. I, I like what James had, uh, written and submitted. And, uh, also have to say that people should refer to one instance, uh, EDC meeting on December 8th, 2021. Mike's comments there are pretty, uh, interesting, um, and, and raised some flags. So I'll be under my two minutes.
Thank you. Anyone in the room present to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Robin Campbell, back row. I just wanted to thank Peter and Judy Anderson for their many, many years of service to the town of Wellington. And they will truly be met. Um, and they wish them well in, um, in their new home name.
Thank you, Robin. Uh, yes, sir. In back row.
Bob Shabbat, 17 years, personally. I just like to let the public know that during the course of Peter Anderson's, uh, tenure with the Conservation Commission, the commission was, was able to bring in over $300,000 to purchase open space in Wellington for the public's use. And, um, sure that, uh, I can follow with that in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demers.
Good evening. I just want to echo, um, Robin and.
By yourself, Kathy?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Kathy Demers, 48, Nathan Road. Um, I'm on the Conservation Commission as well. And I just wanted to, um, thank Peter and Judy for service to the town. They've been wonderful people to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, yes. So, yeah.
So I just want to follow up on my earlier.
Identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Uh, I just want to follow up on my earlier comments, um, and explain submitted to the EDC and to respond to Ms. Barrett Mackens who, um, you know, made a comment following. Um, I just want to be fair. I mean, I've been very intentionally trying to stay away, um, from all discussion related to the psyche policy planning group of Mike Ma. Um, I actually have no problem with Mike. Um, I think he's a good guy or responsive as his role in the zoning agency. My concern is specifically related to his actions at the EDC meeting related to my application and so that's pending before the planning and zoning commission. Yeah, I don't actually have a problem with psyche planning and policy group at all. Um, I don't know if there's any wrongdoing, but since we're going to this conversation, um, you know, my concern is with the contractual relationships with psyche policy and planning group. They serve on both the EDC and both the planning and zoning commission. The EDC sets up regulatory change and makes requests with the EDC to enact regulatory change on behalf, um, of the towns. The problem becomes the psyche planning and policy groups specifically works with outside developers to enact policy change in bounds to, for their financial benefit. The problem becomes with psyche planning policy group representatives on all boards, they both set up and then enact regulatory change in this town. And there's no way to divest, to confirm that there is investment of their personal business relationship with the role they serve in this town. It has nothing to do, I'm not accusing them of any, pointing there like he's there because I'm breathing, finding it right. Um, I'm not accusing them of any wrongdoing. I'm saying there can be no certainty of this town and the optics look horrible, which is why there's such a concern in this town, um, related to the development of EZ 22 town. Um, it's something this, and the finance department and this board needs to look at carefully. It, I bear him no ill will, um, but the relationships in this town need to be addressed. You, I mean, I like Mike, you all like Mike. I get it. You all want to support him. I, I, again, I have no concern, but you need to address it. It is an underlying problem. And it's rolled over now because of the dual role in an application that's what, that EDC chose to represent inaccurately, without, um, the information needed. That's going to be heard from the EDC. So that's all I'll say. I'm going to try not to comment anymore about it, but it is a concern and you guys need to address in one way, shape or form.
Thank you.
So you can under the rap.
Mr. Pippin?
Uh, hi, Thomas Pippin. I live on 46 Schofield Road. I would just like to, um, reiterate the point that was just brought up about speeding in the Village Hill area. Since I do live in this area, um, I do see a lot of speeding and there's a lot of young children and elderly folk who live in this area. So it would be really nice for, um, some kind of looking into the speeding. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? All right. Move on to good and welfare. Um, I'll, I'll just speak to speeding, speeding on, um, that road, the Schofield Road, Village Hill.
Hand up.
Okay. Okay. Wait just a moment as we move past that. Um, that, that we work regularly, um, with the, uh, state police, um, regarding speeding in that area. We have put up, um, uh, radar speed signs, um, collecting the data and then working with the, the state police, um, who have, um, done some patrols out there. Um, so, so I, I want you, don't want folks to think that we aren't aware of it and taking a look at it, um, be, because we are. Um, certainly Schofield Road, um, it is, is a concern and we've spoken with the troop about it many times. Uh, they're surprised to see the data that we received. I can't say, um, I am disappointed, but not surprised. We had middle of the day. Seventy.
Seventy one, seventy two.
I was going to say 72, um, miles an hour on, on that stretch of road. So it, it is a cut through. Um, and I'm not going to accuse any, uh, one resident of, of any town, um, but it's, it's an ongoing problem. So we are aware and, and looking at it. Um, mobile food share every other, every other Wednesday at 11 o'clock here in this building, it is open to anyone. Uh, Wellington residents as well as residents from other communities. So next Wednesday, the 28th, um, there'll be food share every Wednesday morning, 10 a.m. ish. Um, the senior center, um, has a kind of bread and, um, pastries. And so you can feel free, Wellington residents can, can drive through and take advantage of that. I'm going to thank our seniors for their continued support there. Um, as always, please support our small businesses and, uh, restaurants. And I have two reports from Troop C. For July, we had 320 calls for service, 10 accidents, 10 criminal investigations, zero burglaries, one larceny, 201 non-reportable matters and 14 arrests, 92 total traffic stops. Um, zero onsite DUIs, no arrest, no misdemeanors, 26 infractions, eight written warnings and 34 verbal warnings. In August from Troop C, we had 353 calls for service, eight accidents, 12 criminal investigations, one burglary, three larcenies and, uh, 230 non-reportable matters that, uh, led to nine arrests. There were nine, 97 total traffic stops, um, that included two onsite DUIs, two arrests, two misdemeanor summons, 42 infractions, 18 warnings and 32 verbal warnings. Um, while this always strikes me as a lot, I do have to remind myself, um, this covers Williamson's portion of IED for as well. Um, I will mention that there is, um, yet a continued meeting for a, a public hearing at Planning and Zoning tomorrow at 7:30 p.m. Um, I will say that once again, we have provided, uh, we will be providing, um, service from Troop C um, to be in the attendance at that meeting. Um, I certainly hope, um, despite what side of, uh, a topic our residents stand on, that we conduct ourselves um, in a manner so as not to threaten the safety of, of any individual, um, at such meeting and hope that it doesn't have to come to this farther. So I, I know our residents, um, feel strongly about, um, this particular topic. Um, but let's, let's remind them who we are in Wellington and there are different ways that we can, um, speak up. Um, and that there, there's never a place for, um, violence in any aspect. So when you see a police presence, um, know, um, that it is there at, at my behalf. And next Monday, is it at 7:00 p.m.? BAA will meet. Um, and if you have any questions, you can, um, uh, reach out to the assessor's office. But next Monday, not this Monday.
Next Monday, Board of Assessment.
Board of Assessment Appeals. We're hearing motor, motor vehicle, um,
Appeals.
Appeals.
So if you have.
Yeah, you don't, you do not. You do not need it and you do not need an appointment. So it will be outside. Let's hope it's not raining like it is right now. All right. Liza or Jim? Seeing no further business, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:58.
Second.
Uh, this is a non-debatable matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Um, can you?